The regular city council meeting for April the 7th, 2020. Want to welcome those who are watching remotely. We're going to have the invocation by myself and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Tim Larkin. So, I'm going to incorporate into my prayer part of a devotion I was reading this morning. It seemed relevant. "We need a still point in this twirling world of images and feelings, especially in such a time as ours. If we are tethered at some center point, it's amazing how far we can fly out and not get lost. The true self, our name in heaven, is our participation in the great I am. It is what Peter daringly calls 'the ability to share the divine nature,' in 2 Peter 1:4. The true self is characterized by contentment and abiding level of peace, happiness, and love, and every now and then it becomes pure joy." Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us. We pray, Lord, that your peace rains down on your children at this time of uncertainty. We pray, Lord, for our healthcare workers, give them strength, health, and energy during this national emergency. We pray for those who are sick around the world and here in our community, either from the virus or from other ailments. And, Lord, we pray for wisdom for our nation-state and for us in this council meeting today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see, before we move on to Phyllis, I just want to thank the residents of Bossier City who are complying with the social distancing and stay-home orders. The number of cases would certainly be higher if these orders were ignored. I do want to encourage all residents to continue to follow the social distancing and stay-at-home orders. The sooner we comply, the sooner we will have a better handle on the COVID-19 crisis in northwest Louisiana and the sooner we can get back to normal. So, let's see, Phyllis, you want to say a few housekeeping rules?
Yes, sir.
Then we'll have roll call.
Okay. In accordance with the Governor's proclamation, number JBE 2020-30, Section 4, any citizen that wishes to observe the city council meetings live may do so and on Suddenlink Channel 12. The Bossier City Council will do its best to allow for public participation during this meeting and all future meetings until the Governor's order has been rescinded. Since we can only have 10 people in the chambers for the meeting, the public comments can also be made via electronic devices. With Louisiana Revised Statute 42:19 and Attorney General's Open Meetings Guidance, in order to meet quorum requirements, some Bossier City council members may be involved in the meeting via telephone or video conference. If you have any comments that you would like to make on any agenda item, you may email those comments to cityclerk@boziercity.org and they will be read into the record. You may also call 318-549-4595 and you will be placed on speakerphone to make your comments. You must state your name and address for the record and you will be limited to three minutes for your comments. We will allow five for an item and five against an item in accordance with adopted city council meeting rules. Please remember that this is not a question-and-answer session and that you must speak clearly and slowly so that we can understand you. Please, no foul language or the call will be disconnected and you will forfeit your right to speak. Since we are allowing for public comment period, agenda items will take longer than usual because we will allow 45 seconds between the reading of an item and the vote being taken for any public comment. And also, counsel, the number is scrolling on the screen for those that are watching on Channel 12 and should be streaming at home as well. It is, the number is streaming on the screen so that we don't have to repeat it at any time.
Okay. Thank you, Phyllis, for all your work getting this set up like this. So, we'll move on to roll call.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Darby? Mr. Darby, are you on mute?
Not there, but here.
Okay. Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
All present.
Okay, we need to approve the minutes of March 17th, 2020, regular meeting and the March 31st, 2020, special meeting and dispense with the reading.
So, move.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any comments from the council? So, there is a clock up there that counts down to 45 seconds. So, that's what we said we would wait between.
There's about a 15-second lag in between the video that is us live and the video and so then that gives us an additional 30 seconds if anybody wants to call in. So, 45 seconds.
So, if anyone has a good during this time...
I know we got slammed for some awkward pauses last time, but we're doing the best we can.
There we go. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Okay. Did you get Jeff?
Yes, yes, sir.
All right, so, we have an add-on?
Yes, sir. It's going to be number 14 under new business. It's adopt a resolution repealing resolution number 10 of 2020 and that's going to be a first and final reading.
So, move. Second.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience?
I'll get better with this.
Comments from the council. What, say, anyone watching, Phyllis, you might add this to your housekeeping, is that we do have a mobile app that people can load to their phone and watch the council meetings. It really is just a portal that connects you to the website, which you gave the address to. But it's Civic Mobile. You go to your App Store and type in Civic Mobile and it just follows the instructions. Okay, counsel, please cast your vote. Okay, that motion carries. So, we need to approve the agenda as amended. Second.
I don't like looking back up at you like this.
Comments from the audience. Start that clock. I think we have five extra seconds.
Yeah, about five.
I mean, I'm getting the light.
You get a different perspective, yeah.
I mean, I'm serious.
I like looking down on you.
I knew you would. I noticed you ended up behind my back.
That's why you keep turning around.
You don't like it when people sit behind you. Sneak up on you. Okay, I think that's enough time. Please cast your vote. So, we have...
Motion carries.
Motion carries. We've approved the agenda. No ceremonial matters, no committee reports, unfinished business.
Adopt an ordinance mandating that all residential properties, including all multifamily housing units, have working utilities. Final reading.
So, move.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Comments from the council, if you have them. You can make them while we're waiting.
I just had a question. Did Mr. Darby draft that?
This is from Jeff.
Yeah. I was just making sure that when it says multifamily housing units, that it has specifically that each and every unit?
Actually, I think that came from Gordon, didn't it?
I think Mr. Darby had made some changes and Mr. Darby was the one that ended up sponsoring.
Yeah, I don't have it. I'm sorry. I was just making sure that we, you know, that they can't get away with saying...
I can pull it right quick. I have it. But it is for every unit. Mr. Darby made sure they put in there for every unit, every household, and every unit of the multifamily housing.
Okay, so there's no...
There shouldn't be any.
Angle out, you know? Okay, just making sure.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Mr. Darby, for making sure of that.
No comments from the audience?
No, sir, no comments from the audience.
Counsel, please cast your vote. So, that carries. We'll go to number two.
Adopt an ordinance terminating Argent Advisors, Inc. as municipal advisor for the city of Bossier City and authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute the attached municipal advisor engagement letter with Sisong Securities Corporation.
So, move.
Second.
That motion and a second. Any comments from the audience?
The longest 45 seconds ever.
Okay, counsel, please cast your vote. So, that motion carries. We'll go to number three.
Adopt an ordinance appropriating $450,000 from the 2015 LCDA bond issued to purchase new software for the permits department, MPC, and property standards. Final reading.
So, move.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. Motion carries, number four.
Adopt a ordinance to fund improvements to the Waller Avenue lift station at a cost of $250,000 to come from the LDEQ-SRF loan CS 221103-02. Final reading.
So, move.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience?
I think we could put some kind of little app, you know, in between here where we can, like Solitaire or something.
Okay, counsel, please cast your vote.
Scott, you didn't have a comment?
I had no comment. Number five.
We just going to sit idle and quiet?
Got something to say.
Adopt an ordinance to fund improvements to the Mike Woods Park Lift Station at a cost of $50,000 to come from the Parkway Capital Projects Fund. Final reading.
So, move.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? All righty, counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Number six.
Adopt an ordinance restricting access to Bossier City water facilities without prior approval. Final reading.
So, move.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Okay, counsel, please cast your vote. So, that motion carries, number seven.
Adopt an ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute the attached amendment number four between the city of Bossier City and Manchek Consulting Group, Inc. in appropriating funding for the referenced amendment. Final reading.
So, move.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Hey, counsel, please cast your vote. So, that motion carries, number eight.
Adopt an ordinance appropriating $2.1 million from the 2015 LCDA bond issued to design and construct a fire station in the East Bank District. Final reading.
So, move.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Okay, counsel, please cast your vote. Motion carries, number nine.
Adopt an ordinance appropriating $1 million from the 2016 sales tax bond issued to fund part of the required 2.5 million for furniture, fixtures, and equipment for construction of the Louisiana Technology Research Institute. Final reading.
So, move.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. Motion carries. We'll go on to new business.
Number one, adopt an ordinance declaring an emergency does exist affecting the health and safety of public regarding acquisitions of emergency medical supplies for first responders as a result of the COVID-19 outbreak and authorizing an appropriation of an additional $200,000 from the 2020 EMS Capital and Contingency Fund to purchase medical supplies. First and final reading.
So, move.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council?
The clock stopped.
It never really started. It's just been sitting at 37.
Probably good, Mr. Irwin. You're good, Mr. Irwin.
Is that about it?
Mm-hmm.
Counsel, please cast your vote.
Mr. Montgomery, did yours work?
They would have sent kind of message.
It's processing.
Is that a gay?
There it goes.
Yes.
Okay, it became up. Motion carries.
Okay, motion carries. So, we'll move on to number two.
Introducing an ordinance to amend ordinance number 133 of 2018 for the purpose of amending various articles of the Unified Development Code as a result of a regular general review of the document. First reading.
So, move.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any comments from the council?
And counsel, this item takes a little bit longer advertising than our normal ordinances and so we won't hear this one again until May, the first meeting in May.
And counsel, please cast your vote. Motion carries, number three.
Introducing an ordinance to appropriate $38,500 to come from the Hotel Motel Tax Fund to be used for the purpose of kitchen small wares for the Century Link Center. First reading.
So, move.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Okay, counsel, please cast your vote. So, motion carries, number four.
Introducing an ordinance... Introducing an ordinance authorizing the issuance of not exceeding $130 million of taxable utilities revenue refunding bonds, Series 2020, of the city of Bossier City, state of Louisiana, in accordance with the terms of the General Bond Ordinance adopted on July 6, 2010, providing for the sale of such bonds and providing for other matters in connection therewith. First reading.
So, move.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council?
I tried to read really slow.
Counsel, please cast your vote. Motion carries, number five.
Introducing an ordinance amending ordinance number 10 of 2019, appropriating an additional $1 million from the Sewer Capital Contingency Fund for the unforeseen repairs to the sewer sub-basin B.C. 14 rehabilitation project. First reading.
So, move.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Comments from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Mr. Darby, what's your vote? I got it.
Okay, motion carries, number six.
Introducing an ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to enter into the attached amended local services agreement with the parish of Bossier and to execute any documents and furtherance thereof. First reading.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. Motion carries, number seven.
Introducing an ordinance amending ordinance number 85 of 2018 by changing the zoning classification of a certain tract of land containing 4.391 acres, more or less, situated in Section 9, Township 18 North, Range 13 West, Bossier Parish, Louisiana, from B2 limited business to B3 general business for future commercial use and modifying the fencing requirements set forth therein. First reading.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Jimmy, do you know where this is located?
Yes, right there next to the Flying Burger and the new custard place. They're going to build another strip center on the other side of that property and the people from the townhomes there don't want the mega wall like they have between the residences. They want a wrought iron wall so the MPC approve that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Counsel, please cast your vote. Thank you, Jimmy. Motion carries, number eight.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the acquisition of property through the institution of exappropriation proceedings for the street and water projects in connection with the Walter O. Bigby Carriageway Parkway North Extension Road Project and Waterline Project. First and final reading.
So, move.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. Motion carries, number nine.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the acquisition of property through the institution of exappropriation proceedings for street and water projects in connection with the Walter O. Bigby Carriageway Parkway North Extension Road Project and Waterline Project. First and final reading.
So, move.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council?
While we're waiting, I just think we ought to commend Mr. Mosley. He's not here right now, but, I mean, he has really done an excellent job in attacking this problem that we've had for years and resolving issues and getting things moving. So, no one's here, but for the record, I'd like to note...
He has moved at lightning speed.
And he's kept us informed.
He has kept us informed. It's worked out well. Yeah, thank you, Gordon.
My hat's off to him and I want the council to recognize him as well for his...
Okay, so, counsel, please cast your vote. So, that motion carries, number 10.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the acquisition of property through institution of exappropriation proceedings for a sewage project, the Melrose Sewer Main Project. First and final reading.
So, move.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Okay, counsel, please cast your vote. Motion carries, number 11.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one police officer for the Bossier City Police Department, and that's a first and final reading.
So, move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the counsel? Okay, counsel, please cast your vote. Motion carries, number 12.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a laborer one for Parks and Recreation. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Okay, counsel, please cast your vote. Motion carries, number 13.
Approve Report of Change Order Number Two for the sewer sub-basin BC14 project for an increase of $464,766.35. Total cost of contract with increase $2,539,672.43.
So move.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the counsel? Counsel, please cast your vote. Motion carries, we have the add-on, number 14.
Adopt a resolution repealing resolution number 10 of 2020. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Okay, counsel, please cast your vote. So that motion carries, that's all the items we have on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, do you have anything you would like to say?
Okay.
Any announcements from the counsel? Being none, and this meeting is adjourned.